Master Agreement to AECom and KCCS. Again, Marion, it's your show.
Marion Pace Procurement Manager. Procurement solicited a request for qualifications under the State of Florida statute for Consultants Competitive Negotiations Act for Construction Engineering Inspection Services, also known as CEI services. And we were wanting to establish a master agreement for these services for projects when the city deemed it was necessary to have the services. But we didn't want to award it to just one firm because if that firm was the engineer of record, they could not be the CEI. So we did state in the solicitation that we wanted to award it to at least two firms. So the evaluation and selection committee went through and they evaluated their written submittals and also went through the interviews. And they did shortlist the three firms that submitted. And KCCS came in first and AECom second. So the committee did select those two to enter into negotiations. Since KCCS was selected first, we did include in the solicitation a scope of work for specific authorization one, which would be CEI services for Harbor Walk Area 2A and 2B. So with AECom, we just negotiated the hourly rates for the master agreement. With KCCS, we negotiated the master agreement and also the scope of work and the estimated not-to-exceed fees for specific authorization number one. So before you, you have the two master agreements. And then also for your consideration award would be Amendment One to KCCS for CEI services, which will also allow them to review the plans before we put it out on the street for bid. Because in their submittal package and in the interviews, they did mention a couple of items that they would like to discuss on the plans before it went out for bid. It is a not-to-exceed hourly rate of, or not-to-exceed amount of $306,570. We will pay them on a monthly basis based on the actual work performed, number of hours, based on the position. And it must be fully detailed and justified documenting those hours. Staff recommends the award of the master agreements to both AECom and KCCS, both of Tampa, Florida, and also the approval of Amendment Number One to KCCS for Harbor Walk 2A, 2B.
Are there questions for Marion? Thank you for the explanation. So we need to approve things? Do we need to approve things separately?
No, one item, as a total.
Approve the whole?
Item.
The whole schmickle schmackle?
Yep.
Move approval of Agenda Item V B.
Are you striking schmickle schmackle?
I'll put it in the award letter.
Yeah, there you go.
Five B. I move approval of Agenda Item 5B.
Okay.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to approve Agenda Item 5B. Would all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. You like that schmickle schmackle, huh? You've never heard that? Oh, my gosh. I don't know, maybe that's a Midwest term then. The whole schmickle schmackle. Okay, the request by the Pickleball Committee to undertake an acoustical study is our next agenda item.
Normally, this is well within my purview as city manager to approve. However, this is a committee that was formed by city council. And you requested that they come back when they have ideas and suggestions. The chair of the committee is here. I would like her to come up and speak to two items. The acoustical study. And they also put in a request for a camera to monitor play. We do not have any extra cameras to monitor play there. They are, a member of their committee is willing to purchase one if we put it up.
Yes, I drew the short straw, so.
Good morning, Donna.
Good morning, Donna Peterman, Pickleball Committee. The Pickleball Committee has met twice since its appointment two weeks ago and identified 15 items so far to research as part of our 90-day fact-finding mission. The acoustic study is one of those items. And we believe it'll provide scientific data that will be important in guiding the council's deliberations on an ultimate decision. We are requesting the funds now so that we can capture conditions at the Gilchrist Park Courts pre- and post-noise abatement. And we think that's going to be important for that location as well as if there is a decision to relocate courts or build courts in other areas. And since making this request to the council, you have the proposal of a Tampa-based firm in your package. I believe we provided another local firm's request, proposal that the city manager has distributed to you. So again, we can bring the cost in, you know, significantly once procurement goes through a bidding process.
Okay.
So that's the reason for the acoustic study.
Okay. Are there questions for Donna?
I do have questions, though.
Gary?
So is the idea that you do the acoustic study when all the courts are open so that you have data for any subsequent?
Yeah.
Because we will be closing four of these courts sometime.
Yeah, we'd like to do it on all eight courts in play to get the maximum impact pre-putting up the abatement material.
Yeah.
And then test again once the abatement material is up.
And the documents that we saw from the vendor from Oldsmar versus the lesser expensive sound study seem to be different. Do you have a statement of work of what you're expecting so that there's, you know, you have a baseline of items that you're looking to track?
Well, can I ask for a little help from one of my committee members?
Of course.
Deb?
Good morning. Deb Sarkisian, Pickleball Committee member. We, I, when I went out for a request for proposal, left it to the experts because that is something, I don't believe I'm qualified to direct them in how to do acoustical studies. Basically, what we've agreed to with both vendors is to have the courts fully loaded, preferably to do the testing on a Friday or Saturday when the noise levels are at their highest. We've agreed to do studies before the acoustical abatement fencing is up and after. And we've agreed to test the courts at Gilchrist as well as across the streets from the courts. Again, you know, if there's something that people believe that we should be adding to our requests to these vendors, we can certainly do so. But we did not get that specific with them. We left it to their expertise to provide to us the information.
And as far as a camera, someone's willing to purchase a camera? How would that be monitored? Because, and the reason why I ask is because I live in Burnt Store Isles. We have two cameras at our entrances. And they are surveillance cameras. They are not monitored. So they are not, because residents were concerned about being watched. And they are only, they go back to the cameras if there's an incident that needs to be, where information, they're looking, the police are looking for information. So that's how they're used. They're not someone sitting there watching people. And, because they didn't want to be watched. And so I was concerned about that, that people, you know, might have a similar reaction. So how would you use those?
The thought behind the camera, excuse me. The thought behind the camera was that we wanted to validate. I mean, there are people who believe that the courts are played 12 hours a day, seven days a week, eight to eight, constant. And we really wanted to just capture and really for our own knowledge to know, you know, when is peak play? And is that really true? Are they really operated at full capacity?
Okay.
I mean, so it would not be for an extended period of time. But again, a time lapse, just to get the notion of usage.
Okay.
I have a question. May I ask why we're putting so much emphasis on the Gilchrist Courts when I thought that the goal of the committee was to find alternate locations?
That's one of the factors we're looking into. And that will also be, I'm sure, having a sense of the effectiveness of the abatement. Should we choose to move it, we will have proof that it really works from a scientific perspective. But yeah, definitely locations is one of the 15 factors so far.
I don't disagree. We should have done a sound study first before we even went forward with the acoustical fencing. And I mentioned that a couple of meetings back. But I, while I think it's important, I just think that we're putting an awful lot of money into pickleball. And we're getting a lot of pushback from the community because of that. So I would caution us to not approve a whole lot of money in addition to what we've already approved. It's becoming a real sticking point with a lot of people. So that's my only, my only comment about it.
Gary?
So would be the purpose of the acoustic study to be to generate raw quantitative data that would be applicable to other sites too before you were actually to decide that this would be an applicable site to make sure that we didn't just move the problem inappropriately from one area to the other, but to be able to say that a particular site would be able to support based on the raw data that we collect from here. So this is, is this more like a scientific experiment?
Well, yeah. I mean, I think this would be important data to have before we proposed any other locations. And again, as Lynn pointed.
You're not proposing anything?
No, proposing, suggesting, identifying. Identifying. I mean, we're not proposing anything. But we are fact-finding. And this frankly is a fact we don't have.
And the sound abatement fence, it's a portable asset. So to know what benefit or, not benefit, hopefully it'll be a benefit. You know, that sound abatement study or the noise study will show would be of benefit if that fence gets moved to a different location.
Sure.
Okay. JaHa?
Regarding this, I think our intentions have to be right. On one hand, measuring that there is noise is not necessarily that residents are affected by it, testify to that, so we know there is noise. I'm looking at the firms that propose so far. They're more like music-oriented. Like, they'll be able to measure how much sound there is, but they're not specialized in health effects and property value effects. And I think that if we were to proceed with this, it had to be someone who really specializes in looking at environmental noise, community noise, and sound impacts. And I find that like this firm proposed, their folk, just their training itself is more music industry, make sure a building has good sound effects. And then their specialty is not in community noise. And I find that just measuring noise is not the issue because again, like decibels are not the issue. It really is like the actual health effects and then the subsequent community effects on housing. I think that, you know, this and that kind of study would, is going to cost more. But I think only that kind of study would be the type that we'd have to invest in. If we, and I personally think the residents testing to it is enough for us to know that the noise is apparent.
Can I speak to that, please?
Sure.
Mr. Hartwig, who is an industrial hygienist, he's an environmental engineer, that's his background. And he is very much a subject matter expert on exactly what you're talking about, noise in environmental areas. He does testify in court on behalf of, I believe, businesses as well as neighborhoods. So I think he is maybe what you're looking for.
This quote is the lesser quote?
I'm sorry, the lesser quote.
Yes.
All right.
The lesser quote.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do have a question.
Okay.
The, I know only enough about acoustic studies to be dangerous. So what we, what I do know is that many municipalities in an effort to address the impact of noise and sound have adopted quantitative regulations that identify at what decibel level the noise is a violation of their code. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have something like that. And we were provided this morning with some information, which I believe is a copy of our code, that uses the word offensive beyond the premises. And I'm wondering in the, in the backup material for this item, in addition to the sound level measurements, there's, it indicates data analysis as part of the scope of the service. Does that data analysis go beyond simply identifying the dB level, but, or decibel level, but qualifying or qualitatively identify whether or not that level would be offensive? So that we could put that into perspective of our ordinance?
I guess from my perspective, if we had permission to pursue such a study, I would assume that as part, if we were going out for bids, that we could establish firm criteria as to what services we wanted to have. But I mean, we really can't do that unless we have your permission. And then it could come back here, I would think, to be approved.
Which was in my purview.
All right, well, okay.
Yeah, I mean, as long as council approves doing the study.
So, so again, it would be my recommendation that if the city was going to approve a study, then that study is going to need to take into consideration the terms of our ordinance as to whether or not the level is, whether the noise level or however they measure it beyond just simply the decibel level would be such that would be offensive beyond the premise. Because that would be something that we could then consider in terms of our ordinance.
Okay.
I got a question. What are we going to do with this information when we do get it? I mean, I, it's going to be a subjective decision at that point as to whether we feel it's offensive or not offensive.
Well, hopefully.
I mean.
Hopefully, and to try to put this into legal perspective.
Yeah.
The, in the application of our ordinance, the term offensive must be objective, not subjective. And the term of art would be whether it would be offensive to a reasonable person. And that's why I'm thinking that, you know, in, in the industry, there must be a way of qualifying, not quantifying, but qualifying whether the noise would be offensive to a reasonable person. I don't know enough about the state of the art and the testimony of the experts or whatever because I personally haven't been involved in any type of prosecution relating to a noise ordinance similar to ours. Ours is not unique, however. And so hopefully, that would be the information that would be developed by a study as to not just what is the dB level, but is it, would it be offensive to a reasonable person?
Okay. That's good input. Debbie?
Well, it seems to me, and I really, I understand what you're saying about it's not the decibels. I really, I do get that. But if we say that the noise is a problem and the study shows that before the fence, you can hear something, and after the fence, you can't hear anything, then we've proven that the fence works and we've eliminated one of the problems, correct?
It's possible.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't give you a.
No, but I mean, if it's, you know, if it's that concrete of a response, that there is no noise or nothing registers or whatever, then that's something that we can use going forward if we try to move the courts or if we still need to do some more remediation at Gilchrist Park. I, I can understand why they want the study.
I can clearly understand it myself as well. And I think we need information. While I know that some residents have their patiencees wearing thin and would not want us to spend a nickel. But we have to be pragmatic about this. And we have to collect the information so that we can make an effective decision. And just to make a decision on a motion is not going to, I think, yield, get us where we need to go. We need to have data, in my opinion, so. Gary?
I just want to add, I agree. I think we need data, I think some raw data. Just as I've stated before, whether there's pickleball in Gilchrist or not is not something that I'm married to. I am married to the concept, from my perspective, that there should be a pickleball opportunity within the city limits that our residents can walk and ride their bicycles to, wherever that might be. And that's, for me, the purpose of the committee. And to me, whatever we were, decision we were to make in the future, the, having this kind of raw data would be instrumental, excuse me, instrumental in being able to make that type of decision appropriately. So I'm inclined to go forward.
Okay, so there's been a, are you making a motion that we?
Yes. I move that we, that we move forward with the acoustic study.
Are we going to be selective about which of the proposals we would like to talk about, having them move forward with? Because there are two.
No, no, we will go out there. Procurement will go out there and do a real bid. We can, because the cost is within our, our very, we don't have to do some huge RFP now because the costs are pretty low. So we'll go out there. And these two firms, there may be a few others out there, we don't know.
That has to be put out to bid.
Well, when you say bid, it'll be done. At these prices, I mean, we can get quotes, can't we?
Marion Pace Procurement Manager. Yes, it would be within the informal quote threshold.
Right.
We would just need to have a scope and their expectations and what type of deliverables they are expecting.
Oh, it's quicker than.
Well, then I would like, before we even go further, I would like to make sure we don't order the fencing to be delivered before this gets done. Because that's kind of putting the cart before the horse if we do.
I can cancel the quote for the fence material. It's out on the street for quoting at this time.
I don't know if I would cancel the quote. Do you want to wait to have it installed?
Yeah, well, I guess that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Just wait to have it installed so that we get the, get a reading first.
We need to have the before and after numbers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, well, then I second Gary's motion.
Okay.
Based on that.
Are you including the installation of the camera? So you approve the installation of a camera?
I think that, if it's a temporary situation, it's not a observant situation. I think that the idea of being able to quantify what the actual traffic is on the courts is advantageous.
Okay.
May I ask what kind of period of time we're going to allow the camera? Because I, I think that's a little big brother for me, but.
Right.
It is. I actually do think it's a little big brother. We need to make it a little brother. I think that's a good point, so.
I just, I don't care for the camera part of it.
I would say one week would should be sufficient.
I guess I would like to ask the committee, how long do you need to have a camera up so you can at least track that?
I mean, weather could get in the way, but.
Two weeks? To be, you know, to make sure.
That makes sense. If we have a weather event and it rains on a Thursday, something like that. I think two weeks should be sufficient.
So putting my evil city attorney hat on, I understand that we're not being asked to pay for the camera. But I also want to make sure that if there's vandalism or theft of the camera, that the city's not going to be responsible for that either.
Take it down.
Good point.
The cost of the camera is relatively modest. And we have a pickleball committee member who is willing to donate. So I'm sure we won't sue if something happens.
Just need to have that base covered.
Okay. Okay.
The only thing I'm sure about is that people can sue.
Yeah, people do, but.
Nancy?
Yes, Debbie?
The only thing I would say about the big brother-ness of this camera is that there are a pundance of pickleball people on this committee. And if they're in favor of having the camera on their play, I mean, it's not like we're going out to the general public and, and, you know, photographing something. We are photographing people who are asking to be recorded. So I think it's okay.
Yeah, I just need to, I just felt I had to make the comment that I did only because of the response of residents in Burnt Store Isles. And just to make sure that people. And I assumed it was really only there just to look at.
Numbers.
Looking at play, whether you're tracking it on the hour, you know, every hour.
Absolutely, that is the only intention. And, and I believe my committee is allowed to show that they were unanimous in support of installing this camera to get that information.
I would just want to make sure that the data is not put on YouTube and is kept internally within the city.
Yes, we'll keep all the.
It will be a public record.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the motion is to approve the city.
To approve the.
A sound study.
Allow Howard to go forward with the requesting.
And the installation of the camera for two weeks?
Right.
Okay.
And Lynn's second still stands?
Okay. So would all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So the motion carries four to one. Did you get that, Karen? JaHa was opposed, okay. All right. We'll move on then. The request to remove on-street parking space on Nesbit Street at Harbor Walk Drive.
Good morning, for the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design. And before you is the request from the Harbor Walk Condominium Association for the removal of that one parking space outside of their area. See if I can pull it up. The area is, has the star in front of it there. And what, there were three, there was a recommendation for a bike rack installation or a no park, parking striping of the space. And then in addition, they also asked that we look at crosswalks to be installed in the area so for pedestrian safety. The pricing is included. The bike rack would be slightly under 18, under $2,000. The striping would only be approximately $250. And the only safety concern is that if it is a bicycle area, there is a severe slope there that might be problematic for people, causing injury. So for safety reasons, we wouldn't recommend the striping from staff. But we're available for questions on that.
We also, we don't feel the bike rack is appropriate there. There's bike racks as you enter in Lashley Park. There's bike racks within Lashley Park. Striping is very easy to do, a couple hundred dollars. And we can get that done. And we're really not, at this point, ready to recommend a crosswalk. But at least get the striping done, get the parking space, get the car parking out of there. We don't have issues with it because we added the other parking.
Comments? Lynn?
I totally support marking off this spot because we have had a lot of near misses at that location. And the Harbor Walk folks have been complaining about this for a long time. And I think it makes sense to keep it 100% clear of any kind of vehicles, whether they be bicycles whether they be bicycles or motorcycles or anything because it is going to be an infringement on the line of sight if we let anybody park there. I would totally support stripping it off and leaving it vacant.
I concur with Lynn on that.
Yeah, and I also agree with you, Howard. Because the inlet is there on the curb, that slope, even with, if you're parking your car there...
It's dangerous.
You notice the difference.
Yeah.
And I think someone could easily stumble, and then whatever they have could, that, there's no protection of anything falling into that stormwater inlet. So I think just to have the striping there is sufficient, so.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for approving the no-parking striping only.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the removal of the on-street parking space on Nesbit. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Before we move on...
Yes.
We can't vote on this today, but I was also asked by Commissioner Constance that in, at a future meeting, we consider the possibility of reducing the speed limit on Nesbit at that location during that... From that segment from Marion North tends to be a very high-traffic area, and the speed limit is getting pretty excessive in certain parts of it. And he's asked for us to think about considering that. So I'm going to ask Howard to put that on a future agenda for our consideration.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris had the same conversation probably with all of us.
Yeah.
Do you think it's a good idea?
I think it's a good idea as well, okay.
To have the discussion, we can't vote on it yet.
Yeah.
Okay, Downtown Farmers Market.
Good morning, Lisa Han, the zoning official. The Downtown Farmers Market has grown, as we all know. They've extended over into Sullivan Street. And they would like to be able, this started back in 2008 as a temporary use, came annually to City Council for review. In 2013, council was requested and council approved the weekly market to continue without the need to come back every year. The downtown merchants pay a local business tax based on the number, estimated number of vendors. They don't pay any street rental or park rental fees. The downtown merchants would like to be able to manage the weekly market in a more efficient manner, similar to how special events are held on public property. Staff has researched various rental rates, street rental rates for different municipalities, which range from $50 up to $15,000 per event or per week or per day. For a comparison, the rental of all of Lashley Park for one day, to include the park and the pavilions, would be $750 a day plus a $500 damage deposit. Staff is recommending an annual rental rate of $750 for council consideration.
Any questions for Lisa?
Motion for approval.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the annual rental rate of $750 for the Downtown Farmers Market. Would all those in favor please signify by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. We will move on to recommendation from city officers. City manager?
March 28, 5:00 p.m., Puntagorda Isle Civic Association Building. We'll have our community conversation for public input into the FY 2020 budget. Come out, we will advertise it once again in the weekly report. Come out, offer whatever comments you have for budget priorities because the second meeting in April is when we will be presenting city council with some budget alternatives. That's it.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, as you may know, Mr. Vleko voluntarily canceled the hearing that he had scheduled for March 8, I believe that was the correct date, on his motion for summary judgment. He has rescheduled that now for April 29 at 1:30. So I will keep you posted.
So do you need to have a, does this give you time to have a meeting with us if you want?
At the moment, there is no settlement proposal on the table, so no...
There's no need, okay, okay. Great. City Clerk?
Yes, under Boards and Committees, we have a few vacancies. We have an unexpired term, excuse me, on the Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee, an unexpired term on the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, and a two-year term on the Firefighters Pension Board. Under nominations, we have a three-year term as an alternate on code enforcement. We have one eligible applicant. If you'd like to nominate and appoint, that would be Mr. Jay Nadelson. I need a motion.
Nominate and appoint Mr. Nadelson.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a nomination, a motion, and a second to nominate and appoint Mr. Nadelson to the Code Enforcement Board as an alternate. Would all those in favor please signify by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed? Motion.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. Under Policy and Legislation, thank you all, to everyone who participated last week. Was just a great week of community input. And there were some hiccups, I'll say, but in the end, I think there was, was really rewarding to see the turnout from our community throughout the week and the participation, the high level of participation that really was, the reaction of Dover Cole was like, they were amazed. But, you know, we know this is Puntagorda. And so we know that we are, we care about our community. But some of the polling that was done on Friday evening was really informative to see the amount of support for some of the creative ideas. And in fact, one of the ideas that wowed us was the lighting, the underbridge lighting. And that was really, Howard, you're smiling about that. But I actually talked to the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, Micah Richens, for Sunseeker. I talked to him this morning, we were at the Sunseeker. It was their groundbreaking. And of course, we couldn't stay for the whole thing, but we were there for the, kind of the social time. And I mentioned it to him, and he goes, "Wow, we would love to work with you on that." So I think that there's interest from Sunseeker in working with the city and partnering on that because I think it could be. So that's really good. And so I want to thank everyone. Jaha, I know you're going to Tallahassee next week to carry our torch since I know the Vice Mayor is, has too busy of a schedule, and I can't be walking as much as I would like to, so I can't go either. So please keep us informed.
Without doubt.
And let us know what goes on and any, you know, results of the meetings that you attend and... So, and with that, we'll go to council member comments. Jaha?
Well, yes, I spoke with Howard some about, kind of basically, what we need to be brought up, and so I'll be bringing those things up, you know, like our drainage, you know, projects and other things as well.
Okay, good.
That's all.
And Vice Mayor?
Thank you. This is not something we can vote on because it's not on our agenda, but I do want, I have some comments related to the Buckley's Pass project that I've been asked to relay to the council members. I have been overwhelmingly inundated with phone calls and personal visits and group meetings and other sundry citizenry that are affected by the Buckley's Pass project now that they've all received their assessment letters. And what started out as a really good project that would benefit a lot of people has now turned into a major financial burden for a lot of people. Contrary to what some people in the community may think, people in PGI are not rolling in money. And in some cases, we've got many people who are widowed, who live alone, who worked their whole life to buy a house in the Isles so that they could retire and live on the water. And now they're left with a major financial burden. In one case, a couple that are, they've become almost too old to even own a boat and go boating are now being assessed $4,000. And it's a huge financial burden. And so, just as the other council members do for their districts, this is my time to stand up for the people in my district. And I just want to offer some suggestions as alternative solutions for this project because it's broken. It, in my opinion, it was mismanaged from the very beginning. And I don't think we should have ever segregated out part of our population for the sake of this project. I think that has caused great divisiveness. We really are in a position now where we can do something to make it right. Now that we've been turned down by the MAC Committee for the $500,000 grant, it makes it even more unpalatable for the people that are affected. I can tell you that, in one case, there's a vacant lot on my street where the taxes for the property have only been in the range of $1,000 to $1,500 a year. Her taxes this year are going to be $4,500 or $5,000 if you include the canal maintenance assessment and the increase in the school taxes and all the other things that are going on the tax bill. And then add the Buckley's Pass assessment. So I'm going to throw out some things for you to consider. Again, consider because we cannot vote on it today. But I have suggested to Howard that we look at the possibility of readdressing the assessment methodology and consider using a per-footage basis to assess because there are many properties that are between 85 and 90 feet who are now having to pay two water access units. I'm one of them, and I'm not saying this for my own benefit, by the way. This is, this is a conglomerated input from all the people in my district that have communicated to me so far. We have one person that actually has 55.1 feet of seawall.
Eighty-five.
I'm sorry, eighty-five, I keep saying fifty-five. Eighty-five point one feet.
That's building height.
Huh?
Building height is fifty.
Yeah, but they've got 85.1 feet of seawall, so therefore, they have two water access units. And that's $2,000 they don't have. So, anyway, I would like us to consider the per-foot basis as an alternative method of assessing. I would like us to consider, now that we know where FEMA stands with the money for the seawalls, I would like us to consider, much as former Mayor Friedland had suggested, that the city pitch in and use some of the money that's in our special funds account that we have set in escrow. We have a little more levity with that account now, and perhaps we could use maybe even a half or so of that, what's in reserve in that account to help soften the blow on this. And I would also like to suggest that we look at no more than a maximum specified amount to the taxpayers that are going to be subjected to this assessment. There are a lot of people that are very, very, very upset. I know there's several people that have talked to me that are seriously considering putting their houses on the market because they're so affected negatively by this. So I just would like us to think about some of those things before the April 3 hearing. And I would ask for you guys to really do your due diligence on this one, and let's make it right. The other thing that I will mention is that there are a lot of people that are still asking for a straw poll, and I would strongly recommend that we do that. And if it holds the project up for a month or two, then so be it. I think we have to do this right, and it has to be right and fair and ethically correct. So, thank you.
You're welcome, Mike. I guess I'll reserve comment until the April 3 meeting. Gary?
Two short comments. One is, I'm partially in agreement with you, but I'll reserve that comment. I would just like to ask ourselves and the citizens of the, of our great city to, in their daily lives today, take a few moments and just think contemplatively about the events in Christchurch, New Zealand. It affects us globally as well as in this country. I brought my New Zealand hat to this matter, so I just want to offer that as a moment of contemplative thought for us all. That's it.
Thank you. Debbie?
Well, I would just like to say that during the charrette process and during the design studios, I had the opportunity to speak with so many people that I had not met in my daily travels around through Publix and wherever. They always seem to grab you. But it was amazing to me that the number-one thing that came out of almost every conversation was how much these people love Puntagorda. So we've got to be doing something right. I just hope we can keep doing it.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for citizens' comments. And you have, you can come to the podium, you have three minutes, and you can speak on any subject.
Hi, I'm Sheila Jaeger, and I live in Reda Esplanade. And first, I want to say that you've heard me use the word "I" and "we" when I make my comments, and part of that is because I'm here not representing the HOA. I'm here representing some of my neighbors who are not in a position to come. We welcome the city's pickleball committee's efforts to accumulate pertinent facts. We do. We ask, though, that the facts be interpreted by the committee and the council in context with the science on health risks on noise annoyance. And we'd also like to point out that the noise is a problem. It is both plainly audible at a distance of 100 feet, which is from the park regulation, and is a sound offensive beyond the premises of origin. And by that, we are including the park itself. So when we talk about its appropriateness, we're not just talking about Reda Esplanade or our neighbors behind us or our neighbors in the vicinity. We're talking about the park and how this kind of an activity, because of the noise it generates, is not appropriate there. And when you talk about putting a sound curtain up, a sound abatement on two sides, you're still not covering a whole pie-shaped wedge of the park. That, the pickleball courts cover 5%, I've been told by somebody who plays pickleball, of the park's footprint. And that pie-shaped wedge has its large, large expanse going out towards the harbor and the Harbor Walk. So those people are still affected, and everybody is going to be affected by the appearance. So we're talking about aesthetic as well as acoustic issues with the park. And as far as the 12 hours a day, seven days a week, I've tried to explain and I, and get my neighbors when they do speak to, to say, "We're talking about expectations there, expectations of peace and quiet in your home as opposed to actual hours that you get peace and quiet in your home." And one would like to think one can expect that 24 hours a day, peace and quiet within your own home, as opposed to, well, let's give them five hours a day of offensive noise, as opposed to 12 hours a day. So there's that issue, too. And as far as Victor Dover goes, if you heard him at all, talk about pickleball. He did say this is a problem in all of the country, which you know if you've done Google searches. As far as his polls, 52% and 61% in the AM and PM in the initial opening presentation talked about quality of life here in Puntagorda. And only 4% talked about activities, of which pickleball was only one. They also included biking and walking.
Thank you, Sheila.
My name's Gene Polowski, West End Drive. I want to talk about Lynn's favorite subject, finances. And long ago, I proposed the cut-through, the linear foot method of establishing the taxation on that. I also proposed at that time that since the cut-through is of a benefit to the entire city, that we take the design portion of that, which we can affirm to be somewhere between 10% and 13%, and that would be covered by the city taxation method, and the balance would be covered by the benefactors of that district. Okay, so, yes, everybody in the city, including myself, who does not have a property, would have to pay a little bit more. But in addition to that, the benefactors will get that. The second subject is a compromise situation, and it's on this pickleball thing. I did go out and survey the Pickleplex complex. For those of you who haven't taken the time to go out there, there are hundreds of parking spaces adjacent to it. The ground is surrounded approximately 70% by trees that absorb that. There are no residents around it. You get about 15% view of Interstate 75. Okay, what I provide, I want to give you is a compromise. The Pickleplex has a problem. They need about $45,000 to hook up the city water and sewer. Is that correct?
We've already approved that, Gene.
We've already approved that.
You've already approved that. And the half of that compromise is that you would not spend that amount of money improving a problem area in Gilchrist Park.
No, that was not part of our...
I didn't say that. I'm proposing that you not spend that there. You spend it on the other, which you've done. And that should be satisfactory for that because out there, you have the promise or the potential for 48 pickleball courts versus eight here. It's a little bit to give up, folks. Before we had the pickleball people, we had the bocce people, wanted to have courts in Gilchrist Park. You'll read back about 10 years ago. And that was a real strong push from them, and you didn't accede to that. And that's good, okay? But now, think about it, you've invested enough. If you take the $20,000 to $25,000 that you want to spend on the new Pickleplex in Gilchrist or somewhere nearby, and the cost of the acoustic study...
Thank you, Gene.
There's a problem, okay? Switch it over.
Thank you, Gene.
Are there any other comments?
I don't, Wendy Mueller, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but in the charrettes, and we've been talking about, and you've approved, looking at the Activity Center and different ideas for it. In those discussions, $320,000 was the number I remember being the max that could be used to help renovate the Activity Center. Since the budget for 2020 is on the table, I'm asking that some money is set aside for volunteers to have available in order to maybe keep that center going while we wait for five years and months. and money to afford to build an Activity Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other comments? Getting adjourned, thank you.